The City Council meeting of February twenty seventh, two thousand and twenty-three, the time is seven P M. Opening prayer, Deborah Conti, did I say it right this time? Thanks for joining us tonight.
Thank you, it's an honor to be here this evening, thank you for the invitation through Dr. Page. Let us join hearts and minds. Spirit of life and love which dwells within, among, beyond us. Be with us in this sacred time. We are gathered to do your work. We bring many backgrounds, many experiences. Many differences. We are bound together within relationship, within relationship with each other. People to whom we're connected, and certainly to the community that we represent and serve. May our time together continue to be sacred as we do the work of service. The sacred work that we are called to do. May we bring our best and highest selves to guide and inform our work. So that we may be always guided and informed by the highest spirit which is love. So may it be.
Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands. One nation, united, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Ben, would you please call the rule?
Member Orr?
Here.
Member Volt? Member Schreit?
Here.
Member Warren?
Here.
Member McLeister?
Here.
Member Wyrich?
Here.
Member Matheny?
Here.
Seven present?
Okay, kind of a motion and a second to approve as presented minutes from February sixth, two thousand and twenty-three, and February seventh, two thousand and twenty-three.
I'll make that motion.
Second.
Second. All in favor?
Aye.
Motion carries. Okay, at this time, members of the public wishing to address city council may do so, each speaker will be given five minutes. Comments shall be limited to legislative legislative items on the agenda tonight. The rules for speaking will be will appear on books on the screens. As well as the time, this will serve as the only warning for anyone in attendance, any violation of the rules will result in objection from the premises. And in wishing to speak in public.
I'm John Osborne, three oh seven Fairview Street, southeast, North Canton, Ohio. I haven't prepared any special remarks. Little do you know, it takes several hours to put together, prepare the remarks. Speaking on two items on the agenda. Order seventeen, two thousand and twenty-three, where your conveyance address for wellfield. I think it would be helpful for my elected representatives here to know a rough valuation of what that conveyance to the C I C will come to the city or come to the C I C. So probably worth a million, three million. I'd like to hear a ballpark figure on that. Secondly, in regards to that. How much equipment are we going to have to just write off and zero out that are on the books? I think we should know what we're having to just write off the books. All the well equipment. And then third regarding that property, I'll give you a little history lesson. My first month on council back in December of oh one. The previous council had just appropriated a half a million dollars to excavate that property, uncover discarded drums. And whatever else may have been discarded in there. Amazingly, the history of that property and adjoining properties, the city used it as a dump site. Former city official who was instrumental in in getting that investigation started told me there was a dump truck buried over in there. In addition to drums. I'll have to apologize, I didn't do my homework and go back and look at the newspaper clippings. But December, January of oh one, oh two, if you're interested. Look at some old newspaper clippings. At the time, we had eighteen plus million dollars in reserves. And the city just rolled out a half a million dollar check, and I don't know if anything really resulted, they did find some drums, as I recall. So I thought I'd throw that in on seventeen. And I hope we can get some figures as to what we're writing off as far as the equipment. Fencing and whatever else, and of course you can throw in a half a million dollars that we've spent. Also on twenty-three, two thousand and twenty-three. Regarding the, I guess, anticipation notes that are being rewritten, I did ask Mrs. Albeck. And she's always been very helpful, and I'd like to thank her. But I guess this is to extend the debt that we've acquired. Purchasing all the Kmart property, the adjoining Stratamon property. Which was again a Hoover dump site. And that's why it's taking so long now to get some kind of results. On whether Meyer is going to build there. Because it's a brownfield property. I don't know what kind of dollars they're having to expend to fix up that property. And sadly, they're not going to clean it up to the highest standards required by law, which are residential standards. They're only going to clean it up to commercial standards. I can't believe our representatives will allow a food store where mothers and children frequent the place for food. Sitting right on top of a brownfield that will not be cleaned up because Myers is going to take the cheap way out. And she cleaned it up to minimal standards, commercial slash industrial standards. So I think that's a black eye on the city. Thank you.
Okay, anyone else wanting to address council? Moving on. Kind of a motion and a second to enter in an executive session for the purpose of discussing the purchase of property for public purposes as permitted under O R C G two. And Ben, would you please call the rule?
She'll move. Oh, sorry. Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Question carries, Ben, would you please give a?
Member Matheny?
Yes.
Member Wyrich?
Yes.
Member McLeister?
Yes.
Member Warren?
Yes.
Member Schreit? Member Volt?
Yes.
Number Orr?
Yes.
Seven in favor, zero opposed.
Okay, you're now entering into executive session. Motion and a second to enter from executive session.
I'll move that we adjourn the executive session, the record should note that no oral action is taken.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Ben, would you please read the title?
An ordinance to recodify the provisions of chapter eleven seventy-two, schedule of fees, subsections eleven seventy-two point oh one A through H of the codified ordinances of the city of North Canton, which establish fees for building permits, plan reviews, and other related services from their current placement in the city of North Canton zoning code to more appropriate placement in the city of North Canton building code.
There.
As the clerk has indicated, this is a relocation of one section to zoning code, the building code. It is a probably a new and improved section from an appearance standpoint, greater clarity. But we should also note that the fees are not being transferred. They're transferred from point A to point B. Questions or comments? Will we adopt the third reading?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Question carries, Ben, would you please read the title of resolution?
A resolution endorsing and adopting the final draft of the two thousand and twenty-three master plan for the city of North Canton, Ohio.
Okay. It's personnel and safety? No, that's you, sorry.
All right. This is the third and third and final reading. We're actually working on the plan. But I'd like to do, before we vote, see if we have any final comments, Christine, I'll lead with you because you played a role in this. Do you have any observations or comments?
No, I'm just glad to see this moving forward. Proud of the work that we've done in it, excited about the steps that are being taken.
Patrick?
Nothing there.
Ben?
Anything there?
Castle, anything there?
John? Well, this is with the, we took the, what, Fifth, Sixth, and Seventh Street and pulled out of the plan.
Stephanie?
Nope.
Okay then, so we've got a general longer term guide. May not be complete. May be amended further. But it will certainly give future councils an agenda. I would assume that our policy analyst will be at some point down the road advising council as to how many of the projects have been completed or their status. Years ago, it was very helpful. I think the pieces and parts are in place for moving forward. And I'm absolutely confident as we get into this that we will have some other items that we add into the plan. That will, so I will make a motion that we adopt.
Second.
Third reading.
All in favor?
Aye.
Close. Question carries. Ben, would you please read the title of resolution fifteen dash twenty twenty?
A resolution appointing Terrence Seeburger as North Canton's representative to the Stark County Board of Health for a five-year term beginning March first, two thousand and twenty-three, and ending February twenty eighth, two thousand and twenty-eight.
David?
Okay, so Mr. Seeburger is Mayor Wilder's appointee and nomination for this position. He has been active on the board for many, many terms and wants to continue to represent North Canton. This is the third reading. Questions? Make a motion that we adopt resolution fifteen, twenty, twenty-three, third reading.
All in seconds.
All in favor?
Aye.
Close. Question carries. Ben, would you please read the title of ordinance seventeen?
An ordinance authorizing the mayor of the city of North Canton to enter into an agreement with the North Canton Community Improvement Corporation for the conveyance of the real property known as the Dressler Wellfield in the Jackson Township. Stark County parcel numbers one six eight zero six seven zero, one six eight zero six six six, and one six eight zero six six eight. Collectively, the properties from the city of North Canton Community, from the city, to the North Canton Community Improvement Corporation, and declaring the same to be an emergency.
Stephanie?
Okay, we're wishing to sell this property and relieve the taxpayers of the burden of the maintenance of this property. I don't know if there's anything else you want to say about it, Patrick, or Gina, Inspector?
I mean, I think just in the grander scheme of things that the we believe that there's a stronger need to develop some new wellfields that are in a better location. This one is being largely built around, there was a rubber company there, Tristan Rubber burned down a few years back. Bosnots is not far off, and so we think that there's some better opportunities for us, and so part of that intent here is that being able to monetize this asset to be able to pay for a new, a new well development and interconnect to our system.
Okay.
Studorio, the properties consist of how many acres in total?
It's about six point seven point five.
Any prime building village area?
That's the foot of the Holopane Bridge, that area is getting more developed.
So one parcel's two point six two. The other parcel is three point one nine. The other third one's point eight nine.
All right, if there are no other questions, I'm going to adopt.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Close. Question carries, can I have a motion and a second to suspend the rules of council requiring three reads?
All moves?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Close. Question carries. And can I have a motion and a second to adopt ordinance seventeen dash twenty twenty-three under the suspension of the rules?
So moved.
All in favor?
Aye.
Close. Question carries. Okay, can I have a motion and a second to suspend the rule twenty-three to allow for consideration of what will be ordinance twenty 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 twenty-three without a committee report?
Revolt moves, suspension of the rule?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Close. Question carries, Ben, would you please read the title of ordinance twenty-three dash twenty twenty?
An ordinance authorizing the issuance and sale of economic development revenue bonds of the city under section thirteen, article eight of the Ohio Constitution and chapter one sixty-five of the Ohio Revised Code to pay costs of a project as defined in section one sixty-five point oh one of the Ohio Revised Code for the purpose of creating or preserving jobs and employment opportunities and improving the economic welfare of the city and its residents and the state of Ohio, providing for the pledge that the purpose of certain non-tax revenues, establishing certain funds of the city, approving related documents, and declaring an emergency.
Stephanie?
Okay, this is kind of an exciting opportunity, we have some key words, economic development, creating jobs, employment opportunities, and improving the economic welfare of the city in our northeast region. Patrick?
Yeah, so our intent here is to obtain source of funding for the next big project that we're working on, and I think we summed up exactly what it what it is on. And as we're closing out the Meyer project and we will be closing with them in the next two weeks. And the other things that fall into place, we're wrapping up that step phase of that, that's all going to be out of our involvement, and it'll be on to the developer to do what they're doing, you're starting to see some stuff up there already. So, but then it's, you know, not resting on our laurels, and I think that ultimately when that's all said and done, and we when it is said and done at Wood, that we will be able to report to the community a tremendous financial success in that endeavor. And so, but we can't rest on our laurels, we have to move on to the next thing, because we have to grow the revenues of this city. We have to grow the opportunities for us to be able to get all different sources of revenue, be it property tax or income tax from some businesses that like to become part of our community. So we need to move on this with the emergency clause, because as you know, the you keep an eye on what the Federal Reserve is doing, they're in the business right now of raising rates, so we would like to lock in a rate now. And in order to do that, we gotta, you know, put them in a forty-five day notice. We want the rate locked in before they need again, so that's why we're moving rather quickly with the financing, and then it'll be available to us once all the underwriting process is completed a couple months from now.
Right.
Anyone else?
I'm going to move to adopt.
All in second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Motion carries, kind of a motion to suspend the rules of council, council requiring three, three readings.
So moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Question carries, and can I have a motion and a second to adopt ordinance twenty dash twenty twenty-three under suspension?
Twenty-three dash twenty-four.
Twenty-three dash twenty, twenty-three, sorry.
Revolt moves?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Close. Question carries. Okay, moving on to department reports, Patrick?
There's the first. Oprah Magazine. The new edition. North Canton is on the cover.
Love it.
Pretty cool. Dogwood Park, nice big feature spread in there, a couple pages.
Can you pass that around?
That's a good. Park Superintendent Brian Hill and our Director of Park Development, Captain Freeman will be going to a conference tomorrow. Worth noting, it's a conference being held at the behest of Stark Parks. First time in the county's history that someone is pulling together all the different park jurisdiction to come have a meeting, talk about parks in Stark County, not just Stark Parks, but Jackson and Plain and Perry and North Canton, Alliance, and everybody coming together to talk about what they're working on. And opportunity to either, you know, maybe co-develop or to have more of a comprehensive strategy as we approach park development. So we're going to participate in that, we're pleased to report. And I think that is all I wanted to add tonight.
Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, moving on, Gina?
We are in progress of changing utility billing systems, our software. We are on target for a go-live date April eighteenth, so in your bill that will be coming out shortly in the beginning of March, we put a sort of a reminder notice in there, and then coming in your April, the following bill will have sort of some instructions, what you need to do, what will pay the same, what won't pay the same. How to sign up for payments for dangers, this new utility billing system. Is much more informative and much more user-friendly and has a lot more payment options than though Apple Pay, Google Pay. Look, we're into the new century now, so it'll it'll be it will be advantageous for all users, and so we're looking forward to that April eighth, tax day also, but big day, finance. That's all I have.
Thank you. Mayor Wilder?
Yes, thank you very much. I want to thank council again for working with the city administration on twenty-three dash twenty twenty-three. As we're continuing to improve our our next phase in economic development for the city, so I appreciate the support on that. Also, I'm glad that Mr. Seeburger will be representing us on the Stark County Health Board. And most of all, I want to thank all the community partners and citizens and council who worked on refining the two thousand and twenty-three master plan. It's been quite a journey over the last year and a half or so, but glad to see that we have a little bit of a roadmap now as we go forward. And most of all, I think it's important, as it says in the ordinance, that the council will review this annually so that we'll continue to stay up to date on the things that we've been able to accomplish or things that we have to have to work on. So I just want to say thank you for all those involved in working on the master plan. And of course, as Patrick just summed up, through the Ohio Parks and Recreation Association, us winning the Governor's Award again for this year. It's truly a real accomplishment for our community, and you'd be surprised how many other communities now are reaching out to us for our ideas and what we came up with for that park, so that's all I have right now, thank you very much.
Thank you, Mayor, Ben?
One of the items in the master plan you all approved this evening is improving our digital offerings for residents, so how easily people can apply for things online. And thanks largely to the same software rental registration through, we are plowing full speed ahead with that, so as of today, you can apply to pretty much all of the city's boards and commissions online on our website without ever having to come into city hall anymore, so that Z B A, planning commission, civil service have all been digital.
Fantastic.
It's my report?
Thank you, that's great news. Jamie?
I have no report this evening, other than just saying I'm excited that we're moving into the modern era with some of our offerings, so.
David? So, on the personnel side, we have some new members to our fire units. Firefighter paramedic Megan Brown. Firefighter E M T Kevin Lesman, and firefighter E M T Eddie Murray. All sworn into their positions, they are going to be hurrying, are being part-time. We also have one returning part-time member, and that's Brittany Zimmerman, as a firefighter E M T. Now Brittany actually works for the Salaback, and she is going to be moving to firefighter E M T. She's going to stay for a month to help train our new employee, which is Nancy Decker. Nancy comes to us fully trained, actually, in most cases, as a utility billing clerk from Lewisville. So somebody is going to be able to step in and move in real quick and has already worked with Miss Alaback in the past, so it's worked out really well, so. A lot of good things happening on the employee side, and that's the strength behind the cities, good people. That's what I have.
No one corrected your spelling or your pronunciation of those names this time?
No. Been practicing.
Stephanie?
Okay, I have been fortunate to go to a number of different events, kind of focusing on Black History Month. So we were all invited to go hear Congresswoman Amelia Sykes, it was not this past Friday, I think, but the Friday before. And so there were, let's see, Baron Bernaby was there, Mayor Kathy Kanzaro Perry, a couple commissioners, Lawrence Township, myself, Bracarless, and maybe a couple others. And it was, she was just wonderful, and it was truly, for those of us who've been on council, it was the first time I've ever received a notice from someone in Congress asking to meet me in person. And she had just been over to East Palestine and said, gave some history about that, and of course I wanted gossip, so I said, what was the State of the Union you're dressed like? And she was just so honest and kind of talked about her story and how she got there. I really didn't know that, so that was great. And then on Monday of President's Day, we were also asked to participate in the N double A C P event that they had, and I know many of us got that event very late, like on Thursday, I think it was, and but I did respond, and Robert, gosh, Robert Thompson, I think. Do you, do you know Robert Thompson? He was in leadership, so I wasn't sure if he was one of the fir-, I swear he said he was one of the first classes, so I didn't know if he had participated with that or not. And then Hester McDaniel is the N double A C P chairperson, and so we each had fifteen minute increments. And so I talked to him about North Canton and kind of even what we're doing downtown and with leadership and just the importance of diversity and having different people in the room, and so I am going to join the N double A C P, it is not just African-American, it's a cultural organization. And also I thought it'd be a great opportunity to have him come and speak before a meeting, just like the library did, and kind of introduce us to what they're doing. His wife actually works in the North Canton City Schools, this is McDaniel, she has, I don't know what her role is, do you know her?
I know her, I don't know what she does.
Okay, so then I went to the Black Caucus that night, that was at the Kingdom Center, which was the old Jewish center. And I got to hear the different candidates from Masland and Canton, and just a great, you were also there, Mr. Wang. and Canton, and just a great, you were also there, Mr. Wang, during a report, but just neat to see so many different people, and I knew so many people from leadership and just the different things that we've been in, and definitely some different, some North Canton people were there as well, and then finally I was able to attend the Black and White Ball this Saturday down at the Doubletree Hotel, and Amelia Sykes spoke again, and then I think it was, who was one of the OJs was there as well, so it was kind of famous, so they were there, and again, just a great, great evening supporting what the Urban League has done, that was by the Urban League, but they were great about just announcing so many people that have been a key part of that organization, and definitely again, so that happened. So, and then a lot of people took off and went to the Windchime Ball, so if those of you, did you guys ever go to that? Supporting cancer, and that was a sellout event, and the woman that started that was just from McKinley, her mother had passed away when she was in high school, and then she's become a huge Glen Oak advocate, and it's, because she's also marketing for Glen Oak, but the neatest thing about that, it is such an all-encompassing benefit, and you see so many people, and that's what I love, it's not just for one group, it's seven hundred and fifty people all supporting an amazing cause, so really cool things going on in our community, and anything that we can do to be more part of diversity and showcase that and be more of a community with opportunities, I love that, so, there I was.
Cool. Thank you. John?
Well, in Ward Four, I've been walking the ward, talking to a lot of different people, they have some concerns, which most of our constituents do, but they're, they're, they're small, you know, it could go from geese to park equipment to the roads, well, no, I didn't get those something, I've talked to Patrick about it, he's going to take the roads and drive by, he's done a great job, you should get out in your wards and look at these roads, because there are a lot of bad roads, there's bad roads all throughout the county, we're not the only ones, so talk to your people in your wards and, you know, find out what's really on their mind, because many of us will probably run again, we don't want to get hit with all these questions, and, you know, show you care, you know, there's a lot that goes into this community, we live in a great community here in Long Island.
Just speaking of the roads, I know in my neighborhood, you're working on all the catch basins, I mean, it was a warm day and the daffodils were starting to bloom, and you were out replacing catch basins, it was amazing.
Yeah, thank you for that nod, we've been taking advantage of this weather, it's great weather to lay concrete, right? And so we, these would normally be done just, you know, maybe weeks before we started the paving of those streets, but allowing it to be mentioned to John, pre- pride of me, is it's going to give us an opportunity to do other things, because we knocked that out of the way now, and so some of the concerns that we have with some of the streets, we're going to have the ability to get that paving machine out there as soon as the asphalt plan opens in May, April.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Daniel?
Thank you. Not so much a report, but just as a comment, you know, sometimes we breeze through things in our meetings, perhaps without a level of reflection. We heard both from Patrick, Jean, and Ben tonight talking about their software activities, Jean's got new program coming in, Patrick's got some, Ben has referenced it today, and I think when, if you look back over the last forty-eight, sixty months here in the city, where we started and where we are today is like the difference between the light side and the dark side of the moon. Clearly, as a service organization, the ability to make doing business with the city easier should be our objective, and we make great strides in that, you can do all this stuff online, whether it's permits, rental registration, et cetera, that's really terrific. But I think the other element to this is that, you know, many times we make decisions or we approach decisions with anecdotal information, and I think behind the scenes, right now, we're on the cusp of being able to gather more data, more comprehensive data across a range of municipal activities, integrate it, and create a picture of how our city and our residents are operating and living, and that is going to be the, as we go forward, not only do we want to encourage the further and continued development of that activity, we want to make sure that it doesn't fall away, that we have this, so if we're looking at neighborhoods, we're looking at catch basins, you know, I mean, one of these days we're going to be able to tell you when every catch basin in town was swapped out, when was the last time we did a curb project down the street, we'll have all of that, we'll have, we'll have police reports, and it'll be, I won't say it'll be at our fingertips, well, certainly it'll be mine, but, and a call, but the point is, it will make for better decision-making, and I think, you know, that's kind of one of the things that taxpayers expect of us, is to make good decisions, and I think some of this data, most of the data that we're collecting will help us be smart about the money we spend. It belongs to the taxpayers. That's my report. Obstination?
Thank you. Christina?
Um, just wanted to say congratulations to the YMCA, who celebrated their one-hundredth anniversary on February eighteenth, I was able to attend an event kicking off a year-long celebration, the mayor was there and gave really great proclamation, it was really cool, because Larry Hoover read part of Boss Hoover's announcement that he was going to fund this YMCA and create a community building here, and I just think, as I was sitting there listening, I'm like, this is, this is where we originated, right? Like, I mean, this, this man put this vision into place and allowed so many amazing things to happen in our community, and I just think, you know, we have this responsibility to continue, and I'm really proud of how the buildings have been kept up, and the YMCA's maintained, and the library's maintained, and City Hall looks great now, I just, I'm proud of our community, and I think really it was cool to celebrate the Y's one-hundredth anniversary. That's all.
Awesome. Mr. Michael, would you mind, if you wouldn't, elaborate on efforts between the library and Walsh in the senior programming?
Sure, yeah, so in, gosh, it was June or September, I was on medical week, but we launched a partnership with the city, and this kind of came out of the Oprah Conference that I attended, not this past year, but the year before, realizing that we don't have a recreation department in the city, right? Like, there's parks and recreation, we don't have recreation, and so as, you know, Catherine and I were at this conference, we were talking through all of what these other communities were doing, and they have senior programming, and, you know, all of this programming going on, and we just, we don't have the capacity to do that as the city, but the library does, right? And so the city has space, they have the Civic Center, so we launched programming, the city, the library actually hired someone specifically to do that, as well as like delivery to senior citizens, kind of to reach out to special populations, and so every Tuesday and Thursday, we have Sam Kui Kahi, at, her husband is Hawaiian, at the Civic Center, managing programming from ten until three, it's really cool, they start with some sort of physical component, it was yoga for the first several months, now it's Tai Chi in partnership with Direction Home, which used to be the area agency on aging, so Tai Chi from like ten to eleven-thirty, and then there's a little break where these, you know, seniors bring in their lunch, and they eat together and talk, and they forge these really great friendships, and then there's a speaker or an activity or a craft or something that happens then from like one until three o'clock, so attendance continues to grow, it's, it's just been a very, very cool partnership, and, go ahead.
Now is Walsh involved in some of that?
So Walsh then approached the library and said, you know, we want to partner with the, with the city of North Canton more, how do we get involved, why they approached me, I mean, you know, I guess I do things and, you know, I'm on council, but they chose me, they came to me, and so I was like, okay, I'm introducing to all these people, but one of the things they do now is once a month, they come in and do programming for the seniors, something they're doing, I think it's next month, they're coming in and doing a bring-your-own-device program, so seniors can bring their phone or their iPad or their Kindle or whatever they might have, and they're bringing their, some technology students in their Walsh IT team as well, to come in and help people, yeah, it's very cool, so, yeah, we're really proud of it, it's been going well, I just think there's a lot of opportunity for growth there, too. Thank you, thanks Patrick.
That's awesome.
You have to be a senior to bring a device.
I mean, you can bring it to the library anytime, okay.
I don't have a lot, I just, you know, most of what I was going to say has already been taken, but what I notice when I listen to everybody speak is that we've made a shift over the last several years to become more proactive about stuff, so, I mean, all of that stuff, the parks, the software, the programming, I mean, all that stuff that just didn't exist three years ago even, so it's pretty amazing. That's awesome. That's very cool, so, I'm very, I'm very excited about a lot of stuff going on, it's a good time to be in North Canton. Moving on, starting a new business. The meeting calendar, March sixth will have a committee of the whole, March thirteenth will have city council and committee of the whole, March twentieth, we have no meeting, March twenty-seventh, we have a regular city council meeting. Why, why are we doing the two, are we just moving back the twentieth to the thirteenth?
I think it was just anticipation.
Okay. Sounds good, I will entertain a motion to adjourn.
Roll moves.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?